Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coast Star, the Official Newspaper of the Borough, Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on February 20th, 2020. A notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building.
Thank you, April. Could everybody rise and join me in saluting the flag of our great nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everybody remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops, their families and all our first responders? Thank you. All right. Do we have public comment on this resolution?
We can do that.
Any public comment on the resolution that we're putting forth tonight? No? Yes?
There will be another public comment here for today's debate.
Yes. Yeah. There'll be a public comment after. This is just for the resolution that's on tonight. All right.
Yeah, it's a resolution to appoint a professional service contract for environmental services.
Okay.
Take questions from the council now?
Papers put out by the police?
Yes, they're on the table.
I just brought them to you.
I just put them out there. They're out there.
All right. So we need a full phone conference so people can add a lead.
All right. Go get it, Steve. I'll wait for you.
April, there's an acronym on here and I don't believe there's an explanation of what that is prior. So what is LSRP? Services?
It's a licensed site remediation professional. This has to do with, Mazur notified us that they no longer will perform that service. By law, we have to do it. New Jersey State DEP notified us. We had 45 days to get somebody in because of violations from 1999 and other notice of violations from the Marina. So it's a state law that you need an LSRP on staff and that's why this resolution is being put forward for services to remediate the notice of violation from the New Jersey State DEP.
So the previous municipal engineer served in this capacity?
Mazur had somebody that performed this function. All right. They no longer, they sent me a letter. As soon as I got the letter, I notified our engineer, state mandates that you need it. We got the recommendation of Brinkerhoff. They came down, gave us a proposal and we're just following what we have to do with state guidelines.
And when Mazur notified us that they were no longer going to do it, they also notified us of a remediation violation that the Borough had in 1999?
We were notified that Marina from 1999, that there's been a violation from, I believe, an oil tank that was down there for years. So we have to, we need a licensed site remediation professional to make sure that we're in compliance down there, especially by the Marina, with any type of violations. And then we have some other violations that we have to attend to within the next month or so pursuant to end New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. So that's what we're working on. That's why we had to do it.
All right. And these are two different, under number one, we've got the 12-5. So that's the P fade for service with the notice of violation. So that's the oil tank from 1999. That shall not exceed 12-5. And then for the LSRP, licensed site remediation professional services shall not receive the 10-9-75.
Right. That's for both violation of the 1999 notice of violation and then others violations that we have down the Marine Basin. That is not to exceed that. We're trying to get all the reports from DEP in order to know exactly what it's going to cost us, but this is, we had to get them on a retainer.
And is this, are these fees paid out of the general fund of the Borough or are these specific to the Marina?
Marina's out of the general fund.
Right. That's out of the general fund.
Marina's out of the general fund.
Okay. But we try to operate that.
We try.
For our income.
Yeah. We tried to. You have any questions on it? All right. Steve, you have any questions on it?
Was this work bid out? Did you tip multiple bids on this? This is to say we have one company.
Well, this is only for the professional that has to write the bid specs and everything and what needs to be done.
But you've got to pay this person.
Right. Yep.
So I think, you know...
It's under the bid threshold and doesn't need to be put out to bid.
What is the dollar amount?
It's lower than the bidding threshold and for professional services like this, you don't have to go through the formal bidding requirements. In addition, there was a need for Belmar to do something quickly because we were sort of, Mazur caught us a little by surprise by sending us a letter saying we're not doing it anymore and we have to have someone to do that. So those are the reasons we have the right to do it the way we did and we did.
So there's a minimum, there's a minimum amount that you want to bid. If the guy, is the contract with him just to go that high or can he just keep going at high?
It's a flat contract. I think for...
Not to exceed.
Thirteen thousand.
And we hope it comes to lower.
Anyone else? All right, April.
A motion to close the public?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt resolution 2020-73?
I'll make the motion.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsfer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Next, we have first reading and introduction on ordinance 2020-13, an ordinance of the mayor and council amending chapter 29 entitled Water Sewer Rates. Do we have a motion to offer for first reading and introduction?
Um, I'll second.
All right. Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsfer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment? Yes.
I have reason to believe that this meeting is not being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I base that on the fact that the act requires a 48-hour notice, adequate notice, which is 48 hours, given the time, date, location and to extent known, the agenda of any regular, special or rescheduled meeting. All right. There are three pieces to this requirement. The first one, obviously prominently posted in at least one public place reserved for such or similar announcements. It's the second one, I think, that hasn't been met, which is mailed, telephoned, telegrammed or hand-delivered to at least two newspapers, which newspapers shall be designated by the public body to receive such notices because they have the greatest likelihood of informing the public within the area of jurisdiction of the public body of such meetings, one of which shall be the official newspaper where any such has been designated by the public body. And if the public body has failed to so designate where any has been designated by the governing body of a political subdivision whose geographic boundaries are coextensive with that public body. I checked, actually, the agenda says that the notice was sent out on February 20th, which is a Thursday. If it was sent to the Coast Star, I presume, they don't publish until next Thursday. So that means there was no publish in the Coast Star. I checked the Asbury Park Press. There has been no notice of this meeting in any of the additions of the Asbury Park Press since the 20th, which means that you're not...
It wasn't on the 23rd. Excuse me. There was notice on Tap into it on the 23rd of February.
But that's not, that's not a newspaper.
It's not a newspaper, but it's what we use too. A lot of people use the conference to whether we use media.
It, there is a provision in here that says you can use the internet, but that does not override the position that it has to be in two newspapers.
The statute requires that we provide notice to the newspapers.
Right.
And we did that 48 hours before tonight.
Knowing that they could not publish it.
I don't know about that. Yes, I don't, that's true.
Well, they're not, they're not required to publish it. They're required to be notified.
Yeah.
So the Coast Star, the Coast Star, the Asbury Park Press and Tap Into It are listed as our official newspapers and all three were notified on the 20th and it was posted at Borough Hall and posted on our website.
Okay. Counselor, you might be aware of this. There's a case Patterson versus Cooper, which actually cites an earlier case of Wort versus Upper Township, in that the court says, "When a public body sends meeting notices to newspapers for publication and to the actual or readily-assertible knowledge of that body, those newspapers cannot publish the notice at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There is no compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Logic demands this conclusion. Were the opposite true, the purpose of the law would be circumvented easily." The court in Patterson versus Cooper agreed with that and it's a settled law, basically, that it has to be published 48 hours or before that for adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act. And we have not had that.
Okay.
Which means that any actions that you do tonight are going to have to be redone.
Well, somebody here doesn't agree with you and we think we've complied with the statute and so be it.
And I think you haven't.
Okay.
Okay. And you haven't.
You win. I mean, you stop.
So you're going to redo this at another meeting?
No. No, I'm being facetious. We have. What I'm saying is you win because you want to keep on talking your last word.
No.
We've complied with the statute. We have to give...
That's your opinion. My opinion is you haven't.
I agree with you. That's your opinion.
I know. But my opinion is correct. Well, I'll bring a verified complaint in the Superior Court and we'll find out whether or not I'm correct or you're correct. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, Steve?
Hi. Steve Lamoin, 403 C Street, right here in Belmar. I haven't been able to attend a lot of the council meetings lately because I have childcare issues to deal with on Tuesdays. But can you explain, or maybe I just haven't seen it, why we're having a tax increase?
You mean water rates increase?
I mean, water rate increase, right.
Well, there was a $400,000 shortfall in it so that we have to try to make up. And we were trying all different ways on how to do it. We think we come up with the best solution at a least affect the most amount of people here and trying to move the heavier use rates to the people that use the most amount of water. So...
And what was the shortfall? What caused the shortfall?
Using all the, we knew we had a problem last year, but it was using all the surplus and moving the surplus around so that we got caught with zero surplus and the increase in costs and...
So obviously, it sounds like expenses have now exceeded revenue.
Right.
Okay, right. Well, what's driving expenses?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that are driving it. The water rates, they weren't matching for the last four years, but what, how they did it to keep them flat was they just kept using the surplus, using the surplus. Well, everything else was going up. So now we're caught this year because there's no surplus.
Okay, so... If I could, the, sanitary sewer on all the towns, it goes to the county to be treated. The county can, and you get billed by the county for the number of gallons you send to them. They keep raising their rates to us.
Well, that's Smurza and then plus, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of water going through that shouldn't be going through into the sewer system and we're trying to work on that because every time it rains real heavy, we're getting a big flow into the sewer system. So our rates are going up that way too, but...
Okay. But I've heard that issue before.
I know.
But I have never seen any action.
Yeah.
Measurable action taken against that.
Mike Campbell and those guys have been doing a great job taking care of a lot of that, trying to get all these sub pumps piped into the storm drains instead of in the sewer system. So they've been working with a lot of homeowners.
Maybe I just haven't seen it in town then. Right? What has been done?
What has been done to stop the infiltration?
No, no, he just said...
With the sub pumps?
Sub pumps.
Sub pumps going into the sewer system.
There's been a lot of them.
Going into the sewer system. He said, he said DPW has done a lot to correct that issue. I'm just curious to see, you know, what was done.
Okay. When we go out and we're doing our meter inspections, we check the sump pump lines to see where they're going. We have made several recent ones, again, that we call the police department, call the code enforcement after taking the sump pump from their cellar and pushing it into these sewer lines, then they're cited and they get fined and that's what we're doing.
Okay. Is that like five a week that you do?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
You know, right? So I mean, it could be one a week.
Well, anytime they find them, anytime they find them, so, you know.
You know, right? But...
I know there's been a lot done because that's one of the things we're working on.
We've done and we've put out the literature and again, we're, it's an active thing. So there's no, there's no set, today's Thursday, we're doing sump pump inspections on people's cellars. I can't, number one, I can't get in there.
So Mike, I know, Steve, you haven't said this, but maybe this is what you're trying to get to. At one point, when you were attending the meetings regularly, we talked about putting some kind of a colored smoke into the system that would go into people's houses that we could see and then that would identify they had an illegal sump pump pumping into the sanitary system. And Mike, could you walk through that process? Because I know we normally, we formally didn't do that, but a notice was sent out and as a result of that notice, the, my understanding was there was a significant number of people that self-reported and corrected the problem that we, that you determined the cost to do that test was no longer feasible, given the number of the people that had reported the system and that your staff had found while doing these inspections. Am I kind of correct, am I correct on that?
Yes. And it goes one step farther. The reason for the smoke test was because we were in the K Street area and it was a area where we were talking about the water infiltration coming in so hard. So again, once we got that resolved with the pump being done, putting the, we had Oswald come in and fix the brakes in the lines and then we also put out the literature for people telling we're going to go out and do the smoke test. The water that was going through there went down greatly, number one. Number two, to put the smoke test in, you have to have the fire departments there, you have to have the state there, DEP there. So again, we, just to do it for the whole town on a, I'm going to catch basis, is kind of tough to get it resolved. So what we have been doing is when we're going down to these cellars, we are making visual inspections to see where they're going and we're tackling them, you know, on that, on that range.
And code enforcement looks at that every time they do an inspection, right?
Yes.
So then may, have you seen, do we have numbers that show our gallons decreasing as a result of the work by DPW?
We have meter rates and smurzas that we get every month, yes.
Okay. So have we...
I haven't seen, I haven't seen them, but I guess our CFO has been...
Yeah. Because I mean, if we, if we had what we use and what we treat to be equal, you probably wouldn't need a tax increase. It's a point I'm trying to get at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, right?
Well, that I don't know.
And I trust you mayor and the council and the heads of all the departments to take care of this for us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And as far as I'm concerned, you failed.
Steve, if you were at the last meeting, which I knew you weren't because of the personal situation you're in, our auditor gave a chart and we need to get you a copy of that. If you look at that, you'll be able to see very clearly from 2014, what costs have stayed the same, what have increased and the increase is primarily in debt service coverage and how much of the reserves were had in 2014 and how it's been dropping each year up until now, 2020 later. When you see that, I'll explain everything to you.
Okay. But debt service, I mean, interest rates are at all-time lows, right? So, I mean, debt service, we should be refinancing, right? And lower debt service, right? So, but...
And again, I know you haven't been at meetings, but our CFO reported with our auditor that the last meeting, the new before, we've refinanced everything. We've gotten rid of our short-term, high-interest debt and financed it favorable interest rates long-term to pay down.
On the big budget side, right?
Yeah.
It's down from 35 to 31, I think that's...
Okay. That's my piece.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Anyone else? Yes, Joan?
I just have a couple of comments, more or less, about your new ordinance. I think most of us are not happy with the new price increase. Hello. Okay. Couple of years ago, our former Borough Administrator sat here at the table and told us that they made an additional agreement with the Manasquan, with the reservoir and our water that we pull off of that. Instead of six months out of the year, we were going to be doing eight months and this would be a savings to the taxpayer. What happened to the savings? I thought we were going to get a, maybe a decrease in our rates. That was maybe about three years ago, she said that.
I'm not familiar with any agreement with Mercer, with the Manasquan regionals.
Yeah. Where she, she sat here and she said that we're drawing water off of our wells an extra two months.
That was New Jersey American Water, that they renegotiated that contract.
Oh. Oh, it wasn't, oh, it wasn't the sewer, it was the water.
It was the water, yeah.
I'm talking water.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
But anyway, so that money just didn't do what it was supposed to do?
Every, every year, like I said before, they had, they had like about a million-dollar surplus probably in '13 and they just kept eating off the surplus every time the water rates, the expenses were going up and they just kept eating off the surplus until, and we, we knew when we got in here last year, we had a problem with it, but we were trying to figure out what we were going to do. You know, like the beach isn't metered the right way, so we got to, this year, we're going to, we're going to put meters down the beach to see how much water's being used down there and take all that money. But the problem is right now, and this is why we're having a special meeting, is because we have to put a budget in place and right now, the state will not approve our budget on the water sewer the way it is right now. So, believe me, all of us had so many meetings over this thing, trying to figure out the easiest way to work it out.
Okay, I understand. I just, you know, where'd the money go? And my second issue is the reading of my meter. We have a, I'm one person, so I'm in that category with 5,000 gallons of water, right? And we, we've, the meters are read four times a year, quarterly. Quarterly is 91 days in my estimation, right? Now, I have a problem. I've already spoken to Kelly. This is my water usage. No, no, you can borrow this. You get to mine. If you look, you're looking red, no, 90 days. The only year, the only year that actually the, the meter was read properly was in the year 2017. Do you see where I'm being shorted and overt? I got 74, I got 106, I got 81, 70, 111, not 90, not 91. So my reading, when they're going 111, 120 days, I'm going over and getting charged excess. Does that make sense?
No, I see, I see what you're talking about. Yeah.
So especially the last two years, the erratic reading of the meter, there is no 90 days in there. I've got 111, 70, 113, 71. Where's the 90? 89, 91, 92. So I would like that corrected. So I need somebody, and I'm only one person, everybody in the Borough is probably getting an erratic reading as well.
No, I see what you're talking about. I don't have an answer for you. We'll have to check it out, find out.
Well, I'm just saying, if my rate, if my rate is going up to 88 something, I don't want excess because, you know, you're two and a half, three weeks past 90 days to read my meter.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you suggest?
Well...
Did I come in and ask for a credit?
Well, we'll have to...
I'm looking at you.
I thought you were looking at me. We'll take a look at it. We've made a lot of changes in the water department the past year. There was a lot of problems with zero reads and no reads. There was no failsafe when there was a zero reader or no read situation. We were billing the tenant instead of the owner of the building.
That's not my problem.
Listen to me. I want to explain to you where we're coming from. You just spoke and I just want to let you know what's going on. There's a lot of problems with, that we've tackled on with the water department, okay? Whatever happened before we got here, we understand, okay? That's in the past, but you take a, one of our biggest complexes in town, 104 units, they haven't paid the water bill since 2016 and it slipped through the cracks, okay? And we worked on that. The Borough was notified in 2016 in regards to that, okay? So there is a lot of failsafes in the water department that we're trying to fix based on our program, on our admins program, that we're trying to work all this through and make it so it's good for the residents, it's good for the Borough of Belmar. So we are looking into these things. I was unaware of this. I will take a look at this for you and we'll see what, and I'll talk to the DPW, but at the end of the day, that's the problem that we've been having as far as the culture of what, how they worked here.
Joan, can I ask you a question?
Whoever they did in 2017 worked.
Can I ask you a question?
Whoever those guys were, maybe get them back on the job.
They're still here.
I want to ask you a question because I just want to make sure I'm understanding your, everything correctly. So for example, the last date you have on here, you have 8/28/19 to 12/19/19. It's 112 days.
Yes.
And the charge was for 5,130, so you got charged for an excess of 130 gallons over that five.
Well, I wouldn't have been over if they read that in 90 days.
Right. So that's why I just want to make sure. So your point is if that was not 112, that was 90, you may not have gone over that 130 or very likely you wouldn't have.
Right.
And then there wouldn't have been that excess charge.
The only time I go over is in the summer and not by much, now that I'm by myself. I'm not using that kind of water, having that kind of company. But all of these excess charges are days that if you look at the numbers, you know, instead of being read at 90 days, it's 113 days, 116 days, you know, two to three weeks later than it should be. A quarterly reading is 91 days. I would like to see that done.
So how can we rectify that and get these meters read within a reasonable day or two of the time?
Well, you know, somebody did it in the year 2017, 94, 89, 92, 90.
We'll have to see what we can do with that.
Okay, it's before I get the next bill because I don't want to go over.
No, I don't either.
At the new rate. Because otherwise I'm coming to you, Mark, and you're going to give me the money.
Steve's come to me.
Thank you.
Run me over. Yes, Lynn.
Linda Sharke's, Fourth Avenue. Last meeting, I was a little surprised to hear about this problem with the water. And I think it's disappointing hearing tonight that this problem, you were aware of it last year. I'd like to suggest that we create study groups because in town, you have far more engineers and scientists in the general population than you do sitting on, on council. And I think we could work together as a community to solve our own, many of our own problems if we're aware and have some time. For instance, it's not just the sump pumps going into the sewer. You have showers where to get an outdoor shower, you need to put a roof on. You'd be amazed how many of those covers have been removed from the showers. Or have you taken into consideration how much water is pumped into a pool that if you're doing it based on water consumption and you're paying, are you paying, is that billed separately for the pools or do you look at recycling that going into the sewer system? Is it a, are the two independent or is it, is there a correlation between water and sewer?
There is. Even people that have a separate sprinkler meter, it's, it's a different price just for the sprinkler meter because it's not going into the sewer system. But it all depends on how they fill the pool up. If they're just filling it, they could charge the price for filling the pool without, or... Mike, did they call you guys for reading before they...
They called before they fill their pool, and then they're not charged the sewer portion of the water.
Charged about half, more or less.
But they might not be charged, or recharged for...
It doesn't go through the sewer, so the county doesn't charge it for the, for the sewer, but the water doesn't go through the sewer.
Okay, so what are, what are we gonna do about the showers that are open?
The showers, we can talk to code enforcement about, again. But again, when you said before, this is just a small part, it's a minor part. When I spoke with the CFO, the water we're talking about is certainly got, it's important and we have to account for it. This has to do with debt that was in the water department. She explained it to me today, when she was explaining the whole ordinance to me today, that for years, we were paying the minimum, same as it was on a credit card, instead of paying it, you know, any interest, not just your interest, paying any principal off. For years, they were paying off the principal, then they took longer bonds or something. I don't want anybody to think this is just what's going into Smurfsa, Smurfsa, it's not gone up that high, they go up, and it's part of it. But it is not how we got caught into this debt.
I don't know which...
I'm just telling you, the water going into the sewer is not creating this total debt. So I just wanna be sure that. We are doing what we can to stop that. I will certainly look into the showers, it's a great point. But again, that's code enforcement, we're not enforcement, but I will speak to the code enforcement officials that will start looking at that. Because it is important, and you are right about gray water going in there, so again, even when it rains. But other than that, there's a large part of this that is debt, it's not just water. So again, I wanna make that clear.
But I think all of us in the community would prefer to hear about these things sooner rather than later. If you knew last year, it would've been nice that, you know, we heard about it then for planning purposes.
What we were working on last year, but what the problem is, is like the business administrator said, we found over two hundred, we, we finally discovered over two hundred places that the meters were broke. So now, one, once we've calculated how many years they were broke and not working, and we went and put the meters in, now we have to wait for the first quarter to see how much water usage they use, so we could backbill them. But we were hoping that we could've got that done before this, so we wouldn't have had to raise it and try to balance it out that way. But we're still waiting for the first quarter to find out how much it is.
Since we're here on that subject, I have a fan, I have a duplex, I have a phantom meter. The second meter registers how, what the flow is into the second unit. Last billing period, I got billed on the phantom meter, which I'm paying for through the flow on the first one. Which, since I don't have a separate line going into the unit, I should only be billed once. And they're missing the purpose of having the phantom, because that's supposed to give me a reading of what's flowing in, so I could split the bill. And then on, there is no record of why it was put in. And this was, you know, very early on in my purchasing the place, which was probably two thousand.
So you pay for a second meter that you don't have there?
No, I have it.
Oh, you have a meter.
But I don't have two lines coming into the two units.
Oh, but you're paying for a phantom meter, you said, so I don't understand.
Well, I'm being charged for my water that I'm paying for on the first, flowing into the other one.
Right.
And so it was so complicated getting the readings from town, we just now, the two tenants split the bill based on the number of people in the units. Which is, a dollar a day per person is typically what it was. So I just wanna go on record.
I'm sorry, Linda, I don't understand that. So you have a meter off of another meter?
No, off a water flow from one unit. After it comes into the house and is measured, it then splits and services one unit and then the other one.
Is, is it a legal two-family?
Yes.
So you should have two meters, right, for a legal two-family?
So I totally renovated, they didn't require me. I had an architect, wasn't required, put in a separate meter for the house.
It's like Marina View Towers, they have one meter, a hundred and eight units.
So you have the second meter, so you know, I'm sorry, you have the second meter...
Just so you know what the charge that tenant for the water...
Well, that was the whole idea, which I paid to put that second meter in. But because I couldn't get the, when they did the meter readings, they sometimes would do it and then sometimes they wouldn't. So it wasn't accurate. And now the chart, you know, it was on the bill the last couple cycles.
Well, you may not know this answer, is the meter that's read by the town, is it before the lines split?
Yeah, the first ones before, it's, yes.
Well, then you should only...
They should only be measuring one and it not...
If, if in fact the meter is before where the lines split, I think you're correct.
Well, I know I'm correct. I'm like, I don't get up here not knowing.
I, I didn't say you weren't, I said if that's occurring, I think you're correct. That's what I said.
Linda, can you send me an email tomorrow with the address where that is? You're saying there's a water, that, from, off the main, there's a meter that comes in by your house. Once the water goes through the meter and is measured, you're saying it goes into another meter, that same water? Okay.
Well, one goes straight, and the other goes through the wall into the second unit.
I know, but is the water going through the meter and then going into the second meter, so you're being charged twice on that, that's what I'm asking.
Right, only recently.
No, it either had to be from the beginning when the plumber put it in, or from not. I would be more than happy to come over there tomorrow with our water department and look at it. So if you'll send me the address tonight, you have my email address correct? dpw@belmar.com.
Okay, I was gonna say M. F.
Nope, just dpw@belmar.com. And we'll be there tomorrow and we'll look at it. No, no, whatever, tomorrow, the next day, whenever you say.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, Bob.
Bob Lynch, Ninth Avenue, Belmar. I guess, I just, I just wanna talk about the, the numbers a little bit. I did see the presentation, and they said we're, our revenue is like three point two million dollars for water and sewer from the three thousand or so families. And our expenses were three point seven million dollars, so, or three point nine million, I think it was. Yeah, three point nine million, so we have seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall. We have some surplus, we're taking the surplus. We have maybe three hundred thousand dollars we need to find through the utility. So it sounds like we're, we're, what are we trying to get, ten percent more revenue? What's the percentage revenue we're trying to get to, to balance the budget?
It's tiered now, so like, the people that you only use five thousand gallons, which was most of the people...
But there's still gonna be a total, Mayor.
Yeah.
We need to come up with three or four hundred thousand dollars.
I, I think it ended up almost being thirteen percent, it was in that range somewhere. But we tried to put it on the heavier users, the ones that tax the system the most, so.
And then...
And tried to keep the fifteen hundred people or so that use only the fifteen, oh, the five thousand gallons a quarter. Try to keep them as low as possible. So, you know, we, we tried to tier it so that, you know, most of our residents aren't getting hit hard.
And I think, like April said, we renegotiated some of our costs, because I think in the presentation, it said, our cost from New Jersey American Water was actually lower by almost eighty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars from previous year. That, that was in the presentation that the auditor gave the other day. So, our cost of water is, and then we pump our own water the other four months of the year. So our cost of the water is not the problem, I agree with you, it's the infrastructure.
Right.
So, and, and the utility is, is, to me, it's more like a co-op. We all belong to this, we all belong to it, we all own it. We, we pay, pay for the service, we get water and our sewage gets treated. And then the pipes and the plumbing and everything else gets covered. So to me, it's, whatever it costs, as long as we're managing that utility properly, we, we just divide it between the three thousand representatives of this co-op, you know, and... And as long as there's a fairness to it, and that's where I think we've talked, and I've talked about it before. You know, the beach should be charged for water, and it should be fair, you know, they, they shouldn't just get, we shouldn't be allowed to run showers or, you know, all day long for, you know, the whole summer. And, and the bathhouses on the, on the beach, flushing toilets, they should, we should have water bill for showers, and we should have water and sewer for the bathrooms.
Yeah.
It's just, just better managing of the utility.
That's what we're gonna do this summer, this summer, we're putting meters on them, so we know exactly what the water usage is down there. So we can get reimbursed from the beach utility.
Who is, who is, who manages the water sewer utility?
Who manages it? Well, the maintenance of it goes through Mr. Campbell.
Who's the business manager of it?
I guess it's Kelly Woodbeak.
Kelly and the CFO. You know, CFO, or, you know, she was the one that, I think, basically started finding all these places that had zero reads.
Yeah, I, I thank you guys for finding, you know, zero reads, people that haven't paid for years, faulty meters. You know, we, we, it's not, I said, that's why I said the fairness, I don't mind if I'm, I'm one of the three thousand, I pay my fair share, you know? And I, my sump pump, which doesn't, thankfully, I don't need it very much, but it just runs out into the garden, you know? It doesn't go into the, to the sewer.
You know, Bob, and I gotta share with you, and in, as greatly, as much as the physical mismanagement of this system has bothered me, which has put us in this position here tonight, what really upsets me is the physical mismanagement and deals that were cut for people. That creates an inequity, an inequitable system in the, in the, in, it creates an inequitable situation. And I agree with you a hundred percent, it's wrong. We're, we're gonna work very hard to correct that.
And I know in reading the ordinance, you're, you're talking about the, Mayor, you mentioned multifamily, the, the Rio Towers, I mean, I don't know how many, did you say a hundred some units there?
Hundred and four, Marina View.
Yeah, and they, they weren't even paying, if they were paying their bill, they would be paid, they would be charged eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents for their first five thousand gallons.
Seventy-seven thirty-five a quarter.
For that whole building, and then they would be paid, they would be charged, you know, the, whatever those other rates were, seventeen seventy-nine, every thousand gallons over that. So, but individuals, we pay that base for our first five thousand. And now you've got a hundred units, they should be paying, and I know you're saying you're gonna charge them fifty dollars a unit, if I understand it, is that correct?
Right.
So all these multifamily, all these condos and all these apartments that have been converted condos or other apartments, they're all gonna be charged fifty dollars.
There's roughly nine hundred of them that we found. And, and, and finding out that Marina View Towers was not paying the water bills in sixteen, we looked at the system and find out why the system was broke. And we found out that there was no failsafe in the water department accounting office that was utilized, that if there was a zero reader or no read, it would indicate that the tenant was only paying the minimum, which seventy-seven thirty-five a quarter, three hundred and six, whatever it was a year.
Yeah.
So a flag should go up and say, wait a minute, that, that's a huge complex, it's a hundred and four units, how is that all they're paying? So we fixed that system with Kelly Williams and, and the water department. In fairness, we've changed the billing system. Then we went out to look at how many houses and multifamily houses were, did not have a meter and were not charged, like everybody else was, to be fair and equitable. And it's over nine hundred, so that's...
So then that's, that's like another forty-five thousand dollars, fifty dollars times nine hundred.
Right. A quarter.
Per quarter.
Right, and that's fair. Why, why are you paying it and somebody else isn't? So that's all the work that we've been doing, we're trying to fix the whole failsafe. It bothered my mind why somebody didn't, was only paying seventy-seven dollars a quarter in a huge complex like that. How did they not know?
My wife said, don't get up and say anything.
I'm glad you did.
That never stopped you.
So, because she said, I think you just said, our base used to be seventy-seven dollars. Our base is gonna be eighty-eight dollars per quarter. So she said, I'm not worried about that ten dollars a quarter.
It's so much more than that.
So I mean, there, and that's like a ten percent increase, so Mayor, there, there is like an increase to all, everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Everybody's, and then multifamily houses and...
And collecting the money that we haven't collected.
Somebody who has, has multifamily house, even, even a two-family house, there, there's gonna be that fifty dollar charge for the...
Yes, yes.
'Cause I'm gonna turn my brother in for that one.
You should, you should.
Two brothers I'm gonna turn in for.
Turn them all in.
There's a hundred dollars, we're gonna get a quarter for those two guys. I appreciate it, you're trying. I, I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I, I agree with the tiering it. I mean, it's, whatever gallons of water you use, there's a, you can, whatever we have to calculate out that rate so that we have four hundred thousand dollars of extra money, that should be the, that should be the number.
Bob, I'll tell you, I asked that question about the tiering, 'cause I'm very concerned about seniors who are on fixed incomes, who we wanna keep in this town, who, you know, has been here for a long time and given back. But someone who's an expert in this field explained to me this, and I thought that this was very interesting. Oftentimes with these tiers, when you have the, the more, the higher fees for the higher usage, they have a tendency to be obviously commercial projects. And what was explained to me by someone who has a career in this field, is that that wastewater costs more to treat. Because it's, you know, the composition of it is very different than what you find that goes down a residential drain. So that was shared with me, that it's a justification to do the tiering, because for those who have higher flow, the cost to treat that water is typically more, because the water is not as clean, for lack of a better word. I'm gonna get some more information on that, but someone shared that with me.
That's not the way we get, that's not the way we get billed from Smurfsa, though. Smurfsa said, we used a million gallons, went through, was metered through into Lake Como's pumping station. Then we get charged whatever our fee is. They don't distinguish between whether it's got more flushes or less flushes, you know?
Yeah, I wanna look into that further, 'cause I had some questions on that myself, but...
I mean, if they were, if they were identifying like our total solids in our waste stream or something like that, and then charging us for that, but it's not that complicated. And then even the tiers, I know, I mean, again, I don't know what, I can't figure out what the value of these tiers are. I mean, they don't seem to be that much, so they're gonna pay, you know, a couple dollars more per thousand gallons, you know?
Just try to keep the...
It's that, that, you know, to couple...
The people that use the most water?
That taxes the system the most.
Pressure on the infrastructure, that, that, they will pay more. Are seniors that are, are, are under that, that minimum?
I don't know how much more that's gonna accumulate. Instead of paying seventeen seventy-nine, it's gonna be twenty-one, so that's four dollars more, three dollars and thirty cents more per thousand gallons that they're gonna pay. I don't know that, that that's, I don't know what that, if you multiply it out by all the gallons of water we use, I don't know what that amounts to. It just seems like tiering it is, sounds good, but I don't think it's accumu, you're not getting a lot of dollars out of that tier effect.
Well, it's the people that are using like fifty thousand gallons a quarter and stuff like that, so, it'll add up, but...
All right, well, see what, it seems like we're gonna find out what the new numbers are gonna be after we get all these.
Yeah, well, we had our auditor going through a whole mess of different scenarios, our CFO going through different scenarios. I mean, this just didn't happen overnight, that's why we had a special meeting, because...
Some, somewhere, Mark, we have to know, you've got, I'm, I'm gonna ask you one more time. What is the new number? We, right now, we're getting three point two million revenue from water and sewer bills. What's that new number calculate out, based on all your estimates of these new charges we're gonna get? Somebody must know it, otherwise, how did we come up with this number? We had to come up with a number.
Yeah, I just don't have it in front of me. Yeah, yeah, 'cause our, our auditor came up with the formula that we thought would've been the fastest.
Three point two million dollars is I, and I'm not an auditor. I presume that's the revenues that we received, but as Mr. Kerschmau said to you, there are people who didn't pay, or they underpaid.
Well, then we're gonna get more revenues.
We hope, and we'll know that, we'll know that this year.
Yeah, we have to get more revenues to make up the shortfall.
We'll, we'll know that this year.
But we should know how much, you should be able to tell us, I, I would like you to say, we're gonna collect three point eight million. Based on all these changes, we're gonna get three point eight million this year. Somehow we should know, somebody should know that number.
It comes close to what we need to get the budget through with the state. So when we send our budget down to the state, it's gotta match the re, it's gotta match the expenses.
It's hard to vote on something if you don't know the number, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're gonna have our auditor here at the next, at the next meeting, and he's gonna go through it all for the second reading.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going?
Hi, Si.
Hey, Bob said a lot of things that, oh, Si, Four Hundred Fifth Ave, Belmar. You know, and Bob said a lot of things that, you know, I was, you know, seriously considering saying tonight. But there's a couple things. Number one, my concern is that, you know, last year, the taxes go up, this year, the water bill's going up, and there's not a whole lot left, you know, so, you know, what's gonna happen in the future? Where are you gonna try to dig for some more cash? But more importantly, I wanna know, when it comes to the beach, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm on the beach quite a bit in the summertime, you know, but I don't use the shower, and I generally don't use the restroom facilities. But there's thousands of people, you know, that come onto the beach, that use the shower, that use the bathrooms. And I would assume that somebody pays for that water and that sewage. And who in fact is that? Is that the beach, or is that the town?
Well, it's the town that's paying, but now we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna meter it.
So the town is gonna implement an increase, is that on the tier basis?
No, 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 we're gonna take some of that money off the beach utility for, for the water sewer.
Because they're, they're flushing the toilets, it's all going down the sewer system.
You're going on a tier system.
Right.
So, and, you know, I really don't care about the tier systems too much, but, you know, 'cause I'm, you know, a single household, you know, so I know I'm pretty fixed, but, you know, when it comes to the public using the beach, you know, what tier do they fall on? And who bears the brunt of that? Is it gonna be the taxpayer, or is it gonna be the town?
This has been going on for a long time. Where were all of us at that time? This has been going on, right now, we're gonna...
What's been going on?
Right now, we're gonna meter everything, and it will come out of the beach utility, that's where it's gonna come.
So what's gonna happen is then, what you're saying is that the... So what's gonna happen is then, what you're saying is that the tier factor is in fact gonna, you know, be implemented onto the beach?
Well, we don't know because we have no idea how many years.
We don't know, Si, we don't know, it's never...
We, we don't even know how much water is used.
Si, it's never been monitored before, what do we have to go on? It's never been done, so now we, you gotta have a baseline, don't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't you? Okay, we're going, as we're going for the baseline.
Sir, I think what the mayor said is that if the beach utility exceeds the gallonage, they'll have to pay their share out of the beach utility, they're gonna pay it on a tiered basis. So if they use, I don't know what the numbers are, the third tier, they'll get charged where the third tier is, per gallon. And that'll come out of the beach utility.
So that means that it goes from taxes increase to water increase. And ultimately, what that means is that the people who reside in town are now gonna have to pay more for a beach badge because we know that what's gonna happen is once you establish that baseline, you're gonna see that the amount of usage is gonna be higher than what the baseline is because it's an artificial baseline to begin with. You don't have any history of the baseline.
No, no, we don't.
Right, so...
Isn't that, isn't that a shame?
So that's my point.
Nobody ever thought of that before. So now you're coming down on us.
Who voted it?
Your fault.
You know, the idea is that we have, we have restrooms out there that are utilized by people that don't even have a beach badge. We have water fountains that are used without people that even buy a beach badge. In addition to that, we have people that aren't even residents of town that take showers out there. I don't, I don't use any of those facilities, but I pay for my beach badge.
We all do.
You know, the idea is that, you know, I, I, it's just that this, it seems like instead of trying to, you know, bring, you know, the, the finances in control, you know, what we're beginning to do is now that we hit, you know, I was in the country club business, all right? So alls I know about are dues and, you know, incidities with respect to, you know, locker fees and bag storage and that kinda stuff, but it seems that, you know, first last year you hit the dues, raise the taxes. So now what we're doing is we're hitting the locker room fees, now we're hitting the bag storage fees, you know, all to get more revenue into town. So now we're beginning to nickel and dime, you know, and it's unfair to the town. And it's unfair to the town because we cater to people that don't even live here. And what this should be about is about the people who live here. And we should be controlling the expenses so we can make it affordable to live here. You know, I tell you, I love this town. I've been here for 26 years. And the fact of the matter is that it's becoming unaffordable for me and for a lot of people.
I've been here for 40 years, I'm on a fixed, I'm, I'm on a fixed income. I understand and I feel sorry for the people, the single people who are in my, in my bracket. And we're trying to protect them with the water, we're not gonna hit the 2,000 and then... I understand, Si, and when I can see at the beach all these thousands of people that are coming here that, you know, and love the beach as much as we love it.
So let me, let's, let me address what you said, let me address what you said before. So now we're gonna have a line of which are, we're gonna have a baseline for water, you know, so now we can go forward. Why don't we have the baseline and then charge the people that come in here more of a beach pass instead of being $7, be it $9, before we attack the people who live here?
But Si, if we, if we raise it...
What?
We are $9.
Yeah, so if we raise it to $10, let's say, it's going to affect the people who live here, not just the people who visit, we're trying...
What do you mean, why is it gonna affect the people who live here?
You gotta buy a beach badge, don't you? So if you're gonna raise a beach badge, you can't...
Not for the residents, I'm talking for the people who do dailies. Those are the people who use the showers. I have people changing their clothes on my street.
Sir, you can't, you can't charge a different fee for a beach badge simply because they live out of town.
Dude, listen, there's a difference between a resident and a day badge. Do you know that?
It's a season badge and a daily badge.
What are you doing this for? Yes, of course I know that.
Okay, so then, you know, so you just nullified your answer because the idea is that I buy a season badge. But, you know, for someone who buys a day badge, they pay a different rate than I do for a season badge. So understand what I'm saying.
You suggested just paying the people who...
This is the second time that you've responded improperly to something I had to say.
So Si, let me just, so when we came in, one of the things that we discovered is that the property owners, municipal taxpayers, were supplementing many different areas of the town. What we're trying to do very diligently now is to understand and get a real good handle on the cost of each of these different business parts in the town. Like you say, the golf carts, the bag storage, the pro shop, or wherever. And have those operate independently. So rather than supplement the beach, trying to have the beach operate independently. That's why I asked the question about the, the marina with the resolution. You know, the marina, we wanna operate independently, we want the water to operate independently. What we've done for special events is remarkable over the past year and having those events, which the taxpayers were tip paying for overtime for police, overtime for PPW, all these things, really wrap that in. So limiting those special events during high usage areas, moving them to off-season areas and then have those events pay for the cost of municipal coverage. So we're trying very diligently to get in that direction. I mean, it's not gonna happen in a matter of months because we don't have a clear understanding, we're very bad records from the previous administration of what these things cost, but we're trying to go in that direction so that the impact of taxpayers is as minimal as possible. That's what you'd like to see, right? Because I, I think that's what we absolutely have to do and it's hard when you don't have historical data and good records to, to try to get that information. But we're making historic steps, I think. The special events is a good example and, and this water with the beach and metering it, they had some kind of formula that no one could, our current professionals couldn't understand how they reached that formula before. So let's make the users pay for it, not the taxpayers. Let's make the people who are using it pay for it, not the taxpayers.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Si. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Sue Finnegan, 408 Fifth.
Hi, how are you?
What?
No, I said hello, how are you?
Oh, hi. So what I've learned tonight is that in our water bills, we're paying for all the water usage at the beach. Is that true?
As, as of right now, yes, but that's why we're gonna meter it. So we, we know exactly what is going on.
And you've discovered this other large complex that has not paid any water and that's gonna be corrected.
Several.
In the meanwhile, you need to raise our rates to cover the cost before we can get these other, everybody to pay for their own. My objection is in the tiered level. Yes, we wanna keep our seniors, I'm a senior, I wanna stay, but I've also got a grandchild. So I'm doing a heck of a lot more wash than ever before. Why should my gallon of water cost more than your gallon of water? Why? I go to the gas station, I buy gas. You buy gas, we pay the same price. Doesn't matter how many miles you drive.
Well, the tier system...
I like the tier system. That's all I have to say.
All right, all right, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.